Good afternoon. It is now 5:30. I'd like to call the Calhoun County Council, April 28th, 2025, council meeting. Would you give us the invitation, please, ma'am?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, grant us to give, to listen, help us hear the needs, concerns, and perspectives of the people in our community, and respond with compassion. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. May I have approval of the agenda?
So move second.
Properly move to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in favor likewise. Now, the public comments, we're gonna use the same procedure we used last time. Three minutes per person. And we're gonna have a limit of 30 minutes. After 30 minutes, that's it. And then we're going to the public, into the public hearing. The public hearings...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Ma'am, okay.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm bad at hearing also. But, can you hear that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. The public hearing, I don't have any control over the mic. Okay, the public hearings, I'm gonna allow five minutes. We're not gonna answer any questions. It's exactly what they say, it's public comments in the, the public comments and the public hearing. We'll just hear you. We're not gonna get into debate with you. I'm gonna try to debate the council. You'll be losing your time. We'll hear what you have to say. And I'm gonna allow up to the public comments. Be trying to give you all the time to talk and stuff. We normally don't do this, so I'm gonna allow 45 minutes. It's five, five minutes per person. And forty, after 45 minutes, that's it, we're gonna cut off. If you spoke in the public comments, and wanna do the same thing in the public hearing, I will gavel you, we're not gonna hear you twice. So I hope everybody understands what we're saying.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification. Alright, we're gonna do three minutes for public comments.
Public comments will be three minutes.
And then five minutes when we get to the...
Five minutes when we get to the...
Uh, public hearing.
Public comments. And there will be no, we did this at the last meeting, but there will be nobody substituting their time. If you're signing back there, that's who I'm looking to hear from. You're not giving your time to anybody else. Okay, I just wanna make, make myself clear before we get started.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something about that?
Yeah.
On our ordinance for our public hearings, it's supposed to be three minutes per person or 10 minutes per group, is what is in our ordinance.
We can do a group, yeah. If it's a group, if they identify themselves as a group, yeah.
Okay.
They can, we can do the 10 minutes. But you're still taking away from that 45 minutes, that's all we're gonna do.
Okay, but are we, just for clarification, she said, she said that it was three minutes per individual on the public hearings, correct? Is that what you're saying?
And 10 per group, yeah.
And I think we had something, I didn't, yeah, we had that part, 10 minutes, she is correct, yes, 10 minutes.
Right, but what I'm saying, are we, alright, I'm gonna go three minutes for everybody.
Right.
Both groups, okay.
Okay. Here we go. John, who we have for public comments?
First of all, it's Mr. Mike Weber.
I'm in, I don't know what district, I'm in Sandy Run. How many here are on social security Medicare? How many here are gainfully employed? Nobody here are gainfully employed, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. You're paying for my social security and my Medicare, because the government, in their wisdom, have spent my social security and my Medicare. And for those of you who are that on social security Medicare, yours is gone, the government has spent your money. And so for those of you who are gainfully employed, I have no clue what you're gonna get. The thing is, now, your county council and your manager, in their wisdom, wanna tell you how to spend your tax dollar. Think about it. What happened to your social security, Medicare? And now the government wants to take over your money and tell you how to spend it? Which brings me, I have two points, my second point. Somebody in the newspaper, in the headline today, at least we got it today, made a statement. As elected officials, we are held to a higher standard when it comes to the public's trust. Sheriff Summers, whoever that is, said that standard is extended to anyone who is entrusted with tax dollars or authority to act in the interest of our citizens. And when that trust is violated, you can be held to a higher account. Did you say that?
I did say that.
Even a Democrat. Alright, here's, here's my point. You know, we've, we had a committee that wanted to limit our, our acreage, per, what is the acreage? An acre and a half to build a house? Something like that? Three ti, what, two times, they went up and voted, no, we don't want that. So then, in the council's wisdom, oh, we're gonna put it out, and we voted on it as a, as a, as a county. And we turned it down again. Your reputation, gentlemen, is terrible.
Sorry, your hand is up, I'm sorry. Your hand is up. John, who we got next?
Mr. Benji Brickell.
Benji Brickell, and I am a resident of Sandy Run also. And I would like to say...
Sir, could you talk up a little louder now?
Yes, I said, I'm a resident of Sandy Run also. I would really like to thank the volunteer firefighters for all their efforts, the chief, the boards, et cetera, et cetera. These people really risked their lives, I mean, their volunteer work, and, and I wanna say I appreciate it. As of number five on the agenda, it is in my understanding that everybody will be taxed equally, milage-wise, on equipment, vehicles, property, and land, as well as their residence. This is a correct statement, I would say? Nobody will be excluded from this. Another statement is, I would like to say, is that industry pays a fee, and I've seen nothing about a fee going up on industries. Is it? I don't know. I just don't know. It's, it would seem to me that that would be a big part of this, would be the industry fees. As the Sandy Run Fire Department has a very large budget, and I'm sure that that budget includes the protection or ISO ratings of industries. And it seems that this is being put on the shoulders of the residential taxpayer. That might not be correct, but that's what it seems like. So, do the fees, or do the, does the milage stay in the community? Is distributed all over? I guess it is. Also, you know, is all the equipment gonna go up for hot, for the county to basically borrow money on this equipment? These are statements that I understand be true. I know that Sandy Run has a very large budget. I also know that they support the ISO of the industries. And also, all the communities that are around the interstate have a lot of fire calls. I don't know if the budget is considering the fees, I don't know if the budget is considering the money that comes in from fire calls on the interstate, I just don't know. The only thing that I say, if, if the people are gonna be taxed...
Sir, caution, three minutes is up. Let me caution you, you may need to get to your point, 'cause you only gonna get three minutes up here. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ida Koller.
My name is Ms. Ida Koller, I live in Sandy Run. I've lived there my whole life, and long-time resident, don't like what's about to happen. But, I'm gonna make history here tonight, and I'll tell you all how, when I get done. I don't care. May those words resound throughout Calhoun County for years, and may the voters react accordingly when it comes time to vote again for these positions here. For years, residents have said that council doesn't care, but it is rather shocking to hear it verbalized by a council member. We need a council that cares about what the people want, and put their own interests aside. I ask that all of you do the right thing today. Leave our volunteer fire departments alone. These are people who are dedicated to what they do, they love what they do, otherwise they wouldn't be out there risking their lives to save the lives and property of the people they care about. Don't try to fix something that is not broken. Don't increase the financial burden on the people who own property in Calhoun County. Do what the people want. Do what is best for all residents of Calhoun County, which of course includes Sandy Run. My history I'm making tonight is this is the shortest speech I have ever given. There's been many times, some of you know that I have been buzzed out at three minutes, but I don't think that's going to be a problem tonight. I am asking the four of you to make history tonight, the four of you that have supported this proposal for the last two voting's on it, make history and change your vote tonight. Show the people that all of you care about voting against this ludicrous proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John, who's next?
John Rickenbecker.
I thank God I'm not in politics anymore. That's all I'll say. I'm here tonight about the ordinance in regards to the fire departments. I have a concern, I was one of the original firefighters at Bevel years ago, and we made a decision with the board at that time to seek a taxes exempt status for the fire department, which we did receive, it took us about eight months to get it. And I'm just asking you to put some verbiage in your ordinance, if you would, that would say that there's nothing notwithstanding what's going on in the ordinance, 'cause most of it's about your new fire district, that it should not have any effect on the taxes exempt status of fire departments, I mean, you got several that are in the county. And I'm just asking for that, that's all I'm asking, I'm not asking for anything else. And like I said, I'm very happy that I'm not in politics now. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
John?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
That's it for the public comments. We're now in a public hearing on ordinance 2025-5, third reading of ordinance, amending chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, Calhoun County, regarding fire protection and protection to recon, reconstruct the Calhoun County rural fire district, eliminating all existing fire protection areas, appropriating funds to effect the redemptions of any outstanding bonds and others' obligations, requesting and accepting dedication of county-funded fire capital, equipment, and, excuse me, facilitating and other matters relating thereto. We're now in the public hearing, floor is open for public hearing, as I stated earlier, if you already spoke, you will not be able to speak in the public, public hearing. If you spoke on that particular item, and I think everybody did speak on the item with the fire. So the floor is kinda open right now, somebody?
Hey, I'm sure everybody knows my name. I just wanted to mention, and this is not about the ordinance itself, it's about the responsibility of council to the citizens. Can everybody hear me? Okay, it's about the responsibility of council to its citizens, not just what y'all think is good for the people. They've spoke about what they think is good for themselves and their community. I do wanna mention that this is a council form of government, and if someone's house burns down due to this action, you all can be held civilly responsible in a court.
No one else, we're out of the public hearing on, uh, ordinance 2025-5. Okay. Now we're in a public hearing on ordinance 2025-6, third reading, an ordinance to change the zoning destination of TMS number 022-00-00-011, TMS number 022-00-00-012, TMS number 022-00-00-016, TMS number 022-00-00-017, TMS number 022-00-00-018, from rural neighborhood to industrial. We're now open for public comments on that, that ordinance. The public hearings are closed. May I have approval of the April 24th, 2025 regular meeting minutes?
So move second.
Properly move to second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the ayes have it. May I have a motion for approval on the April 16th, 25, 2025 budget work section?
So move.
Second.
Properly move to second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, we need to back up and vote.
Well, I, I, I get that intention, I, I won't do that right now. Now, we have, have a motion for approval on ordinance 2025-5.
So move.
Second.
Properly move to second, that we approve ordinance 2025-5. Any further discussion?
I do have some things to say about that. I have quite a few things to say. First of all, I'm gonna vote no, we have had lack of the fire service input, and I think their input is very necessary, considering that they are volunteers and have been doing this work for years. We're gonna have unknown costs if this ordinance passes. We don't have departmental needs assessments, what would be, which would be in a contract with them. There is no contracts with them as of right now with this new ordinance. So, also tax increases, we're gonna get tax increases on our land, our vehicles, our houses, whatever you have, it's gonna raise taxes on all of the stuff we have. And quite frankly, people are sick of the government sticking their hands in the people's pockets every chance they get. And I, I for one am, and I'm listening to the people and what they want for their community, like we heard some people say here tonight. Another concern I have is the ordinance that I have says this is going to go into effect immediately. Well, if that happens, who's gonna protect us tonight if somebody gets in a wreck? There's no contract with Sandy Run at all that we have. If this goes into effect immediately, they can't respond to calls, because they might get, they're at risk of getting arrested or a fine of $500. So I'm gonna have to vote no on this tonight until we can look into it further.
Paul in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed likewise, the ayes have it, the ordinance passed. We have a motion for approval on the ordinance. Now, I asked for comments, I asked for comments, and nobody's saying anything, now it's the council turn to conduct business, I appreciate it.
You can call me out. You always ready to call me.
May I have a motion that we approve, ordinance 2025-6.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed likewise, the ayes have it. Okay, we down to proclamation?
Appearance.
Appearance.
Calhoun County Zoning Appeals Board, the Board of Zoning Appeals have requested four members, David Stack, Chair, his term is, he's District Four, his term will expire March 9th of '28, Robert Jeffcoat, Vice Chair, District Three, Steve Turkban, District Two, and Herbert Edmonds, District Two.
Where do we need appointments from for that vote? Do we need some more appointments?
We're gonna need a District One.
Richard, that'll be you.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint the named individuals to the Zoning Appeals Board.
Second.
Properly move to second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the ayes have it. Now, I'm down to the, we're down to the proclamation now.
Yes, proclamation recognizing May as the Rutaian Awareness Month.
Could you read that one for me?
Yes, sir.
I think after you read it, Ms., what's her name?
Jill Crown.
Ms. Crim.
Crown.
Ms. Crim would like to make some comments before we approve it. Ms. Crim, let me go ahead and read it, yeah?
Rutaian Awareness Month, May 2025, whereas in 1990, the first Rutaian Club was founded in Sandy Run, South Carolina, a civic service organization with the purpose of creating a better understanding amongst people throughout community service. Rutaan Clubs make South Carolina communities better places to work and live, and whereas Rutaan Clubs have more than 521 members in 18 clubs in South Carolina, 25 states with a total of 20,468 members, and whereas Rutaan Clubs are composed of men and women of all professions, ages, and ethics, ethic backgrounds, including doctors, CEOs, and whereas Rutaan Clubs provide and coordinate a wide range of community involvement projects and activities, including community fundraisers, food drives, and support for local families during holidays, and whereas Rutaan Clubs support local school organizations by providing needed support for teachers and scholarships to deserving students, and whereas Rutaan Clubs donate Rudy Bears to EMS, school counselors, law enforcement agencies to provide cheer and comfort for children in times of crisis. Now, therefore, we, the Calhoun County Council, do hereby recognize May 25th, 2025 as Rutaan Awareness Month.
I'll recognize it, Ms. Crim.
Thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, ma'am.
On behalf of the Sandy Run Rutaan Club, I wanna thank Calhoun County Council for declaring the month of May as Rutaan Awareness Month. Rutaan is a national organization established in Holland, Virginia, on May 21st, 1928. Currently, there are approximately 25 states with 828 clubs with 20,468 members. The Sandy Run Club was established in 1990. Mr. Herbert Giger was one of the first members and still serves today. Mr. Roger Hill was also one of the first members serving until his passing. Our club has doctors, CEOs, school administrators, former county councilmen, retired teachers, fire chiefs, firemen, and many retired persons wanting to serve their community with goodwill and fellowship. Over the past year, we have approximately 21,924 service hours to our community. Each year, we award scholarships totaling approximately $10,000. We donate supplies and financial aid to the local schools. We help 19 families during the month of July with Christmas in July bags. We have helped several families at Thanksgiving and Christmas by providing meals and gifts for the children. This is just a small list of what we do, so again, thank you very much for recognizing us. If we have any Rutaan members here, I'd like for them to stand up so y'all can see.
Thank you.
Ms. Crim, you're telling us thank you, but we wanna tell you all thank you for what you all do. We hear a lot about the good works you're doing, so we wanna tell you all thank you.
And we always open for new members.
Have a motion that we approve the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Properly move to second that we approve the return awareness month resolution, proclamation, I'm sorry, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the ayes have it. Down to the resolution.
Resolution 6-2025, a resolution to amend an agreement related to the joint county industrial and business park of Lexington and Calhoun Counties, so as to enlarge the park. What this is, is a multi-county industrial park agreement with Techno Block Corporation. This is a new industry locating in Lexington County. Whereas Calhoun County, South Carolina, pursuant to ordinance 95-6 entered into an agreement for development of a joint county industrial park dated December the 11th, 1995, and amended by several amendments with Lexington County. And whereas pursuant to the agreement, the boundaries of the park created therein may be enlarged pursuant to resolution of the county councils of Lexington County and Calhoun County. Whereas it is now desired that the boundaries of the park be enlarged to include a parcel in Lexington County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Calhoun County Council that the agreement is hereby and shall be amended to include the property described in attachment Exhibit A to this resolution, which includes the Techno Block Corporation property. Done in a meeting duly assembled, Calhoun County.
May I have a motion that we approve that resolution?
So move.
Second.
Properly move to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the ayes have it. Okay, we down to, ordinance, quite a few of them, John, you mind reading those?
Yes, sir, I don't mind. Ordinance 2025-7, second reading, this is an ordinance amending Section 611 of the Calhoun County sign ordinance.
Motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
Properly move to second that we approve, ordinance 2025-7. That's second reading, huh?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the ayes have it.
Ordinance 2025-8, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the appropriation of funds and the levy of taxes for the fiscal year 2025-26 for the Operation Debt Service Building Fund and Food Service of Public Schools of Calhoun County, the Orangeburg Calhoun Technical College, and the Calhoun County Disabilities and Special Needs Board, including the Elmarion Gresset Center, to provide for deposit and disbursement of funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of public education in Calhoun County.
May I have a motion for approval for ordinance 2025-8?
So move.
Second.
Properly move to second, all, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the ayes have it.
Ordinance... Ordinance 2025-9, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for capital improvements and debt service for Calhoun County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
May I have a motion for approval of ordinance 2025-9?
So moved, second.
Properly moving second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
First reading, motion for-
Ordinance 2025-10, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the fees for county purposes for Calhoun County to operate and maintain water and wastewater for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
May I have a motion for approval of ordinance 2025-10?
So moved, second.
Properly moving second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, the ayes have it.
Ordinance 2025-11, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the fees of Calhoun County purposes for Calhoun County to operate and maintain Calhoun Hills Golf Complex for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of Calhoun County Golf Complex.
May I have a motion for approval of ordinance 2025-11?
So moved, second.
Properly moving second, any further discussion?
I'm gonna be a no vote on that one.
You just wait till I call for the no vote, I don't want that. All, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, now you-
Ordinance 2025-12, first reading by title only, an ordinance to appropriate and authorize funds to operate and maintain the Calhoun County Fire District for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of Calhoun County Fire District.
May I have a motion for approval of ordinance 2025-12?
So moved, second.
Properly moving second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, the ayes have it.
Ordinance 2025-13, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for county purposes for Calhoun County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
May I have a motion for approval of ordinance 2025-13?
So moved, second.
Properly moving second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. John, we down to you.
Yes, sir, just a few things, the animal shelter. I want to thank everybody that came out last week. The animal shelter took longer than we expected, but certainly, we had to raise funds and go after grant funds. So I appreciate everybody's involvement with that, and, and everybody that showed up for that opening. Also, an appreciation, litter pickup that was held last Tuesday. We had 35 volunteers that picked up trash throughout the county, 115 bags, one and a half tons of trash. So, thank you for everybody contributing toward that. The Purple Mark Parade and Festival, I think, this year went, went off well, even with the rain. I would like, for the first time, and I apologize for not ever done, doing this before, but I would like to thank the committee members that have done this time and time again, to give up their time. And more importantly, they give up their entire Saturday when they should be with friends and family. But those committee members are Mr. Mark Brigman, Cindy Hagler, Shayla Jenkins, Brandy Roberson, Melissa McCloud, Terry Parker, Dusty Hair, Cody Hair, Zachary Tarrant, Ms. Rosalyn Warren, Satidra Rivers, and Kia. Also want to thank the sponsors, Calhoun Cares, First Bank, Ferry Motor Company, Jacqueline Film Company, Calhoun Auto Works, Tri-County, Southland Wildlife Seed, Orangeburg Calhoun Tech, Spire's Heating and Air, and RB Davis Insurance. So I do want to thank everybody that, that, that took their time and effort to put that on, that a good event. And then the last thing, the next event that we'll be gearing up for is the Ag and Art Tour. That will be May the 17th, uh, a month, roughly. So certainly, you'll be hearing more about that, and I'll be getting more details on that. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Okay, John, you didn't call your own name, but somebody told me some McGlocklin out there all wet up, McSweat. So we appreciate what you do also.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, no, any, any councilman have any further business? None, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
Properly moving second, that we adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.